Would you like to speak before I present the motion?
Yes.
Is it time yet?
The pigs turning into people.
Oh, it's five o'clock somewhere.
That's right. He's been hanging out at the Eagles a lot recently.
Oh, he has.
He's getting all involved again.
But you know what he told them? He said, "He didn't want any..."
He was selling t-shirts on the way in.
He didn't want any of the crow. He just wanted...
I'm gonna start, I will start.
Oh, there's Amy.
Hey!
Glad you could, uh, glad you could join us.
Yeah, anytime, Mike.
Yeah.
I have nothing else to do.
Usually, usually, I'm the one.
I'll take a little heat off you today.
Are we gonna get the dog bark this morning?
No, I turned it off.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Supervisors on August 1st. Uh, we will now begin our meeting, and we will start today with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you. Please join me in pledging to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seen. Alright, first item on our agenda today is Board of Supervisors Matters, and I'll look to my right at the supervisor who's probably the least prepared for this.
You're right.
Supervisor Worthley.
That was gonna be me.
I know, it could've been any of us.
Be prepared. Uh, this coming Thursday, I'll be meeting, uh, on the Executive Committee with the California State Association of Counties. Um, one of the things of great interest to Tulare County, uh, we will be looking at legislation before the state legislature, uh, is AB 1250. Uh, the impact of that on Health Human Services could be just absolutely devastating to our nonprofit organizations that, uh, we contract with provide a plethora of our services to our, to our constituents. So, uh, CSAC has taken an active position of opposition to it, and obviously, we need to continue to pursue that with our own delegation as well. Um, in addition to that, um, I've been meeting with, uh, we will have a meeting this Friday with the Bryant Water Authority over their potential membership, and the Joint Powers Authority, the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority, and, um, there are some conditions that they've requested to be met before they join the organization, which are somewhat problematic, so we'll be having a conversation with them, and I think that's all I want to talk about this morning.
Alright, Supervisor Ennis.
Oh, you are jumping around this morning, aren't you? Thought you caught me by surprise.
I'm mucking his paying attention.
Well, the South County Jail Facility continues to progress. Uh, I talked to Darren Johns, who's one of the, uh, construction bosses out there. He said that, uh, they're starting to put the cells in and starting to put the, uh, panels and things for the kitchen all in place, and of course, the central plant, which central plant is the big tank that they put in there that helps with the heating and cooling for the facility. So, this thing is moving forward, and, uh, it's looking pretty good. If you haven't had a chance to get out there, uh, it's, it's quite a facility. It's gonna be quite a, uh, addition to our county and probably the biggest, biggest construction, uh, project that the county has ever undertaken. So, it's right at seventy million dollars, so it's quite a project. Uh, also want to commend, uh, County Fire and, uh, the Sheriff on their efforts, uh, Sheriff with the marijuana, and of course, Fire Department has been all over this county. We had, uh, the, the L Mountain in Lindsay where their L is on, burn a couple of weeks ago, and then this weekend, we had the big P Hill. The big P on the hill behind Porterville, it burned off, and then about fifteen hundred acres with it. So, uh, those guys have been busy with the statewide fires and the local fires, uh, they've been pretty busy, so, uh, I want to commend them on that, and of course, our Roads Department for their great work, uh, throughout the county and keeping us safe on our roads and the potholes, and then Health Human Services for what they do on a daily basis. So, thanks to everybody for doing what you do and doing it well. Thank you.
Supervisor Shucklin?
Uh, yeah, last, uh, last week, we had the, uh, second meeting of our Task Force on Homelessness, and we picked, uh, officers, and I was, uh, nominated and elected chairman. I was, uh, nominated by our former HHSA Director, Jason Britt.
Second.
Uh, so, no, that, that Task Force is going strong. Again, we have some great folks in there, and we're gonna do a lot of good work. I also had the, um, our Ag Policy Advisory Committee meeting last week, and we had some very healthy discussions, uh, regarding the, uh, well ordinance that's, uh, floating around out there right now, so we'll be hearing more from that. Yesterday, I went to the, I guess you'd call it an opening ceremony, uh, of the City of Visalia's new, uh, work, homeless work program. They have, uh, three gentlemen that are residing in, um, uh, the Rescue Mission and another, uh, transitional housing, and, and the City of Visalia, along with, um, the county's WIB program, have, uh, worked through to, uh, hire some folks, so that got a kickoff yesterday, so, uh, they're very excited about that.
Alright, Supervisor Crocker.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Sheriff. I, I just wanted to point out that, uh, in between the Lindsay L and the Porterville P is Strathmore, and I'm, I'm not gonna say anymore about the causes of either of those two.
You got an S? You got an S on it?
No, it's down, it's underground. Uh, last week, I, uh, I was able to speak with the Exeter Kiwanis Group. Uh, we've had a nice, uh, discussion about, um, some of the special districts, uh, in that area, as well as, um, some of the water challenges that we continue to face, um, and, and their engagement. Uh, also, last week, I attended the Yosemite Sequoia Resource Conservation and Development Council Meeting, uh, in Clovis, and, um, it, it's a, it's a group that comprises, uh, Mariposa, Madera, Fresno, and Tulare Counties, and, um, the, the goal of the group, uh, among many things, is to help make sure that our gateway communities, um, are, gateway to our national parks are being able to be served, um, to help them with economic development, with tourism, um, but, but really, for the last few years, the emphasis has been around tree mortality, and so we've, uh, they've been successful in receiving some grants to help with the biomass facility in North Fork and Madera County, um, to try and, um, utilize, uh, the fuel source that's readily available, and, uh, to provide an energy source for that area. Um, so we did talk about a few different things and opportunities in Tulare County, um, that, that, that we can partner on as, as, uh, if we've got plenty of economic development opportunities here. Uh, and then, I guess, uh, the only other thing that I'd mention is that, um, I've been working, um, with, with some industry folks and having several meetings, and I'll be meeting with, uh, the Ag Commissioner's Office, uh, later today. Uh, just looking at what, um, is, is a problem that's not going away with the citrus industry, and we, we discussed this, uh, at one of our past meetings in Lindsay about the Asian citrusillid and, and the impacts to what is, uh, over a billion dollar industry in Tulare County, where the number one citrus-growing county in the, in the state. Um, this is, uh, a disease, the Wong Long Bing Disease has, uh, has impacted Florida citrus industry where they've, it's decimated the acreage by about sixty percent, and, um, I don't think that it's an issue that any of us want to see what the impacts of losing sixty percent of our acreage, not only from, uh, from the property tax revenue side, um, and what's, that would mean for all of our county services, but for the jobs and the, and the people that are in the industry. So, um, hopefully, we can, we can work and we can find some creative solutions to, to try and manage what we can in the limited capacity that the county, uh, is able to do that.
Alright, thank you very much. A few things I wanted to go over, uh, yesterday, had a very good meeting with our Health Benefits Consultant, uh, Alliant, uh, came down from San Francisco, and, uh, we had a very good meeting with them, and I just want to compliment our HR, uh, ND, and, uh, really thank them for, uh, their efforts to make sure that the board is, uh, very well in tune and informed about, uh, various health benefit plan options out there. Uh, we met individually, uh, with the staff, it wasn't all five of us, I will assure you of that, um, but, uh, Tom Schur is a, is a wealth of knowledge, and it, it's very nice to have a, a, a strong advocate that's looking out for the best interests of Tulare County and our employees, and this is completely separate and apart from the SJVIA, and, uh, I will assure you that, uh, I know I, as a board member, am definitely, uh, uh, working hard, and I believe all of my colleagues are too, to make sure that we do what is best for the county and best for our employees, uh, regardless of, uh, uh, any current ties to any organization. Um, I also wanted to pass on a compliment to animal control. Uh, I think that, uh, one of my, uh, uh, good family friends, uh, and is a constituent who resides in Porterville, uh, but is represented by Supervisor Crocker, um, so ties with three of us up here, but, uh, um, very, very complimentary of animal control and what has happened there, uh, turning it into truly animal services, rebranding it. Uh, Patrick Hamblin is a very compassionate and passionate person, uh, in dealing with animals, and, um, it's not often that you get, uh, compliments for the dog catcher, but, uh, um, these are definite compliments, uh, for him, and they're very happy with the services, and, um, I, I just think that's very important to point out, and so kudos to, uh, Patrick and his team, uh, for the great job that they do in animal control, uh, and that's in addition to all the people that Supervisor Ennis complimented earlier. Lastly, I, I just wanted to point out, uh, I do serve as the board's representative on the retirement board, um, and the retirement board is actually in the process of adopting, uh, some actuarial assumptions, uh, for, uh, the coming years, and that has a significant effect on, uh, the county's contribution, on employees' contribution, um, and this is really to give the actuary of the plan a level of comfort, uh, with the assumptions that our plan is based upon. Uh, so, if, if, if we're talking about the, uh, rate of return or discount rate, um, we are, this last year, we were at twenty, I'm sorry, seven point six percent. Uh, we're gradually working that down, and we are now, in this next year, gonna be at seven point five five percent. But what are our inflation assumptions? What are the, uh, salary, uh, increase assumptions? What are the COLA assumptions? Um, all of those different items are, uh, something that can be changed or adjusted by the retirement board that ultimately have an effect on, uh, this county, uh, and our finances, and all of our employees' pocketbooks. So, I encourage everyone to pay attention to that, um, and, and I can assure you that, uh, we are fortunate to live in Tulare County where we have a retirement board that is a partner with our county, uh, and not like, um, one of our counties way to the north, uh, where they just make assumption changes without even coordinating with the county. Uh, and then the county's on the hook for the increase in contribution, uh, and the employees are on the hook as well. Um, we have another county to the north of us that has done the same thing. Uh, so fortunately, we work well with the retirement board, we communicate with one another, and we make sure that the decisions that we each make independently are going to be in not only the individual entity's best interest, but in the interest of the whole county family, so, uh, I am very grateful for that. And with that, we are now going to move on to, uh, item two, that concludes Board of Supervisors Matters, and item two is a request to present a proclamation honoring Kerry Martin Higgins as the 2017 Paralegal of the Year by the California Alliance of Paralegal Associations. And, uh, for this, I will call upon our public speaking-loving county council, Deanne Peterson, uh, to, uh, say a few words, and then, uh, I will, uh, head down to the well and present a proclamation. Deanne.
Alright, so, uh, supervisors, Mr. Spada, um, I wanted to take a minute to talk about county council, not particularly for your benefit, but for the benefit of the people in the audience, because I find that when I am out in the general public and I say, "I'm from county council," they think I'm the district attorney. Uh, we are not the district attorney, um, people just...
And thank God you don't look like him, right?
So, the county council by statute is the chief civil lawyer for the county, and we provide legal services to the Board of Supervisors, to county and elected officials, and to other agencies and special districts. We have twenty-two attorneys, ten paralegals, seven admin staff, and four fiscal staff, and we also oversee all of risk management for the county. Tulare County is the county's largest employer by far, and so, uh, if you think about it, we are the largest corporation in some sense in Tulare County. So, county council serves as in-house counsel to the county, um, and we are also the largest civil office in the county, and yet, we rarely interact with the public, and they don't know who we are. While we don't interact with the public a lot, we do spend a lot of time interacting with the legal community. Unlike the public defender and the district attorney, we are not in court, we do not see our colleagues on a daily basis, but we support the legal associations, particularly the local legal associations. I don't know if you're aware of this, but attorneys and paralegals are required by the state to have continuing legal education, to make sure that we are competent in our, in our field, and that costs money. Uh, we can get that legal education through the Tulare County Bar Association, but of course, for paralegals, the programs are probably more directed at attorneys. County council as an entity apply to the state bar to become a legal education provider, and we allow, it allows us to train our staff at a reduced cost to the public fisc. However, in 2013, three county council paralegals attended a meeting of SPA. SPA is the local Sequoia Paralegal Association. At that meeting, there were eight people in attendance and two were vendors, and the membership of the association was thirteen. We estimate there are between one hundred and one hundred and fifty paralegals practicing in Tulare County. Our paralegals decided that something had to be done to bring this organization back to life, and so, one of our then-paralegals, Nancy Woods, ran for president, and Kerry Martin Higgins ran for vice president, and every single paralegal in county council joined the association, and they became part of the rebuilding process. This is important, uh, because at the time, most non-county paralegals were not compliant with the state requirements, uh, but after the county council's office became involved, one of the first programs that they put on was the Illegal Practice of Law, and of course, that would tend to have great potential to harm the public. Within six months, the organization was grown by the county council paralegals to over sixty members, and they ended 2015 with one hundred members. Um, in November of 2014, county council paralegal Nancy Woods became SPA, that is, the local representative to Kappa, which is the California Alliance of Paralegals, the state organization, and Kerry folk, became a member of Kappa and focused on the educational requirements for paralegals. And ultimately, she has focused on the California Certified Paralegal Program, which I'll talk to you about. I would like to point out that this year, the statewide conference for Kappa was held in Visalia. It was tri-hosted by SPA, Kern, and Fresno Counties. Seven sessions at that conference were presented by Tulare County people. One was a Tulare County Superior Court Judge. One was our county administrative officer, Mr. Spada, and also three county council attorneys presented. Another milestone I'd like to point out, because you've probably all heard about the high schools participating in mock trials, our county council paralegals were asked to score this, um, because, and that was for the first time, because usually it's scored by attorneys, and I think that also speaks to the local legal community's impression of the caliber of the, um, county council attorneys. And next year, another of our paralegals would be president of SPA, and that's Nicole Genowitz. But when hiring paralegals, we are concerned with how do we find out if they're qualified? COS used to have an ABA appro, ABA-approved program, but they lost that designation many years ago. Professional certification is a voluntary, uh, process by which some authorized entity tests individuals to make sure that they meet criteria evidencing competency. There is a national exam, um, certified through NALA, which is the National Association of Legal Assistance, but that organization is basically, um, focused on federal law. We practice some federal law, but we are primarily a state organization. Kerry is a NALA-certified paralegal. She is a NALA-Advanced Certified Paralegal in Discovery. She is a NALA-certified California Advanced Specialist in Discovery, and up until a year ago, Kerry was the only NAPA-certified paralegal in the valley. Kappa, the state organization, decided that they would create their own specialist test for California paralegals, focusing on California rather than federal law, and Kerry was appointed by Kappa to have the team that would develop that test and the study guide, and that test will be offered for the first time in California in February of 2018 in Sacramento. So, at this point, in hiring, we will be able to look for that CCP designation, and we will have assurances that we are hiring someone who is qualified, particularly because we have had such great influence on the process. The Kappa, um, certified designation, um, I think I, I talked about that. So, Kappa, this year, uh, awarded Kerry the designation of Paralegal of the Year. Um, that's a statewide designation. She joined us in April of 2013, but she's had seventeen years of experience. She's worked very hard within the local community to, um, improve the quality of legal work, and she continually seeks to broaden her skills and those of paralegals statewide. She is very generous with her experience, she mentors others well, and she is a great asset to the legal profession, and she also serves the community in other ways. For example, she has been the president of the Kings County SPCA since 2014. So, due to her outstanding and tireless efforts on behalf of Kappa, they have recognized her, and I wanted to bring this to the board's attention so that she could be recognized for her service. Kerry?
Thank you very much. Hi, Kerry, congratulations, and thank you for all that you do. Uh, it's my pleasure on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to present this proclamation honoring Kerry Martin Higgins as the 2017 Paralegal of the Year, whereas the California Alliance of Paralegal Associations, Kappa, has named Kerry Martin Higgins as the 2017 Paralegal of the Year, and whereas Martin Higgins has worked as a paralegal for seventeen years and has served the county of Tulare as a paralegal for four years in the Tulare County Council's office, and whereas Martin Higgins is a certified paralegal with an advanced certified paralegal credential through the National Association of Legal Assistance and a California Advanced Specialist in Discovery from the Commission for Certification for California Paralegals, and whereas every year, Kappa, a statewide organization dedicated to the advancement of the paralegal profession, identifies one person they believe who exemplifies the role of a paralegal in California, and each member association from throughout the state submits nominations for this prestigious award, and Martin Higgins of the Tulare County Council's office rose to the top of the list, and whereas Martin Higgins provides an invaluable assistance to county council in handling complex and delicate litigation on behalf of the county, also in identifying and implementing economic ways of fulfilling its complex and often burdensome discovery obligations, and whereas she remains active in the community creating training opportunities and supporting efforts to improve the standing and skills of professional paralegals throughout Tulare County. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Kerry Martin Higgins for her recognition as the 2017 Paralegal of the Year by the California Alliance of Paralegal Associations. Signed by Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Shucklin, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Congratulations, Kerry. You'd like to say a few words?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay.
That being the difference in the paralegal and an attorney.
Way to go, Amy. I like paralegals better.
Alright, well, thank you very much, and, uh, I'm actually going to, uh, use my authority as chairman to pull an item from consent calendar and, uh, take that up, uh, right now, too. This was, uh, not, uh, set on the untimed portion in the beginning of the meeting like it should've been, but, uh, what I would like to do is, uh, now take up item number twelve, which is a request to, um, pro, proclaim and recognize the month of August 2017 as Child Support Awareness Month on behalf of Tulare County Department of Child Support Services and California Department of Child Support Services. I will now call upon our director, uh, Roger Dixon, to see if Roger would like to make any comments, uh, or if you would like me to just, uh, present to you, Roger, I'd, I'd give you the, uh, discretion since you are the department head. I would be happy to. Please come forward.
No PowerPoint?
I just want to say real quick, Roger Dixon, uh, Director of Department of Child Support Services, uh, thank you all for having us and, and taking this up on our agenda item. Uh, our management team makes it happen for us, and, and I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge them publicly and, uh, let them know that I really, uh, appreciate all that they do, and what they do specifically for Tulare County. So, this, this proclamation and what things happened is because of these guys, nothing because of me, so.
Alright, please join me on this side of the well here, you know, that's one thing, uh, Deanne forgot to do, uh, and say, you know, it was all because of the paralegals, all because of the team. Deanne wants it on her back, you know, she wants credit. Where are you, where's the, oh, there she is, she's right behind me. I'm kidding, come on, Deanne. Alright, you gotta have a, a, a county council with good, thick skin on this board. Alright, so now, I will present this proclamation proudly on behalf of the Board of Supervisors declaring August 2017 as Child Support Awareness Month here in Tulare County. Whereas this vision, the vision of the Tulare County Department of Child Support Services is to educate and empower families with the knowledge and resources to promote the well-being of children, and whereas the mission of the Tulare County Department of Child Support Services is to enrich our community by partnering with parents to obtain accurate child support orders, to assist families in meeting medical and financial needs, and whereas more than twenty-five thousand two hundred children benefit each year from services provided by the Tulare County Department of Child Support Services, with approximately forty million dollars in child support expected to be collected and distributed in federal fiscal year ending September thirtieth, 2017. Enabling children to grow up in a, a healthy environment where they receive the financial, medical, and emotional support they need from both parents is among the department's highest priorities, and whereas August 2017 has been selected as Child Support Awareness Month in the state of California. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim August 2017 as Child Support Awareness Month in Tulare County. This proclamation is signed by Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Shucklin, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Congratulations, and may you, uh, spread the good word about what you do, uh, in Tulare County, especially during this month, so, congratulations. And I'll tell you right now, we're gonna have to shift over this way for the picture, and that's just known from experience.
Here we go on three. One, two, three.
They always put me next to the little tall guy.
He's not that tall.
Only one wants to notice, that short.
This isn't action item. Second. I have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, a second by Supervisor Worthley, please vote. Motion passes unanimously on item number twelve. Alright, we'll now move on to item number three, which is public comments. I do have one request from, uh, is it current or former HHSA Director, Jason Britt? I do have one request from, is it current or former HHSA Director Jason Britt to update the board regarding a spice ordinance.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CAO, County Council, Jason Britt, HHSA Director, I think. I just wanted to take a few moments today at public comment just to kind of talk a little bit about, on July eleventh, there were members of the public who were here to speak about the spice problem that is occurring in many communities throughout the state and the country and encouraged this board to adopt a countywide ordinance. Spice really made its debut really, we started seeing it around 2013 and 14. And at that time, the state laws on synthetic marijuana and synthetic substances had a lot of loopholes in it. And so many counties and cities throughout California adopted spice ordinances preventing the sale, distribution, and some manufacturing of those synthetics. In 2015, though, SB 139 passed, which is a comprehensive law that made, I don't know, it names, I think, every possible substance under the sun potentially, made those synthetic stimulants derivatives illegal to sell or to possess or to furnish in the state of California. It is a misdemeanor to do any of those things. However, despite passing the law in 2015 and becoming effective in January of 2016, the agency, through its work, through its tobacco program, its other alcohol and other drug programs, has discovered that many entities, individuals, and businesses are not aware that the law even exists. And so we're going to help in starting to educate some of these owners and entities and individuals about the law and how it's illegal to have some of these substances. Adopting a county ordinance probably would not add a lot of value because it is a state law unless this board wanted to do something to control the business licenses, whether it would be to modify, suspend, revoke, or impose penalties. So however, if the board so wished, we could develop such an ordinance and bring it here for discussion and review. And of course, that takes a whole process, probably between three to five months, depending on how quickly we get it drafted and we agree on who enforces the ordinance. And then, of course, we'd have to have a discussion in public, an adoption, a reading, and a second reading. So again, I just wanted to give you a brief update of kind of what's been happening. The public health departments have been watching the spice epidemic occurring since about 2013. Many public health departments took the lead in their counties and cities, similar to e-cigarettes, to promulgate a lot of these ordinances throughout the state. But in 2015, the state law is pretty clear on these substances being illegal.
Supervisor Worthley?
I'm sure County Council was going to make this comment because you kept looking over at me, but I, you know, there's a concept that when state law occupies a field thoroughly and completely, that there really is no place for county ordinances unless, as you say, it would relate very specifically to that rules that we apply in terms of special use permits and that sort of thing. Just speaking for one board member, but I would rather not have the agency go through an extensive analysis, maybe a short, quick analysis in terms of effectiveness and why, how this might be effective in our county and why it might be necessary. But I mean, I'd hate to see us expend a great deal of time in it because I'm not sure that it really has, would have a major impact on our county. And I think our people have got maybe better things to be doing. That's just one supervisor's opinion.
All right. Thank you very much.
I think, just to add to that, just briefly, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, is just that the agency will work with our programs to step up some of the education because I think that's important. Because we've really been talking to even local government authorities who don't realize this has become a law. And so I think that's going to be the key is to really getting those folks. So we'll be happy to fill that role and then continue watching the progress and if, and come back if necessary.
And I do think there should be some kind of penalty structure that we can add and enforcement mechanism behind that to make sure that we do control and contain this should it persist in the county.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Hey, seeing none? I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the board. We will now take up our consent calendar. Item twelve has already been approved. Item fifteen will be pulled for separate discussion. Item twenty-four will be pulled for separate discussion. Item twenty-seven will be pulled for comment. And item number twenty-eight will be pulled for information only. And item number twenty-eight actually is, the question that I had, I had answered. Anyone else have any questions on twenty-eight? So we can go ahead and leave that on consent calendar. But the chair will entertain a motion. If there are no additional items to be removed by the board or members of the public at this time?
I was going to ask to approve fifteen.
Okay. So the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
I have a motion from Supervisor Shucklian and a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We will now take up item number fifteen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson, John Hess, Deputy CAO, General Services and Capital Projects. Get my presentation up.
Good thing we have a podium that adjusts for a guy that's six foot six, right?
I find it very helpful personally anyways.
Don't go stand next to him, Chairman.
Okay. So presentation really quick about the architect services contract for the countywide space So I was here about five weeks ago giving a presentation regarding the project, and I wanted to give a quick update before I jump into the remainder of the project. So first up, HRD is complete. They're fully relocated and into their new facility. They're operational and so forth. So we are going to be doing some backend review of our coordinating items regarding our custodial and facilities. And as well, the mural will be installed in a week or two with an unveiling date announced by the department shortly. At the Cigna project, fire and sheriff will be complete this month. Fire furniture will be installed August twenty-eighth, and that'll take about one week. So the fire department has selected September twenty-fifth as their relocation date. They've got some internal trainings and recruitments and things that they want to work around. The sheriff's department will be, the furniture will be installed after the fire department on September eleventh. There's about several hundred offices that we're furnishing as a result of that project, so that'll take several weeks. After that, they will begin their relocation on October ninth. That'll take three weeks, again, because there are several hundred individuals, as well as multiple locations, are relocating into that building. The EOC will not be relocating until November after the fire season is complete, as to not interrupt in the potential event of an emergency. Regarding county council, county councils in construction presently, they started about two weeks ago, and all of this has occurred since the last presentation. So we've had a lot of activity in the last few weeks. So they are in the first phase of construction, after which the folks that are in the building now will move into that zone. Then they will construct that part of the building. They'll shift back to that part of the building. And then risk management and CWS will then move into the building permanently. That'll be the last and final component of Phase One, and that's about January of next year is when we're expecting that to be finished. Regarding Phase Two, simultaneously to Phase One, we're also working on Phase Two, which is in design presently. The plans and specs will be brought to the board on September nineteenth. It includes Government Plaza, as well as the General Services and Capital Projects Department. At Gov Plaza, we are doing HHSA, IT, the common areas, and the lobby. At the Office of Education Building, we're doing the second floor, as well as some exterior entrance ramp ADA work that's necessary for us to occupy that building. And that construction is projected to begin in late November 2017. In order for us to get into construction, there has to be a whole lot of relocations that occur prior to that, including the sheriff's office vacating the Government Plaza building so that my department, as well as IT, can move downstairs. And then the second floor is totally vacated, as well as HHSA needs to temporarily relocate out of the building off-site. Second floor gets done at Government Plaza. First floor comes back after there's some internal relocation several months from now as well. And then General Services Capital Project moves downtown. In the midst of all of this, we are also very quickly relocating the district attorney from a facility that they're leasing into this Office of Education Building. As the dust settles on Phase One and on, as the dust settles, as we're into construction on Phase Two, we will then begin a much more thorough design effort with the DA with respect to the remainder of that Office of Education Building. And that'll be a separate construction track than those items that we're talking about right here for Government Plaza and the remainder of the Office of Education Building. So a lot, a lot of moving parts with respect to managing all the logistics at this time. So because of that, the project is very, very large. It's one of the probably largest renovation projects the county's ever undertaken. We are, the primary interest of the project is to improve the working space as necessary for the departments, and there are a lot of employees who are going to be seeing improved working spaces as a result of this. Nearly eight hundred employees will be relocated and improved as part of their working office space. And two hundred thousand square feet will be improved of county-owned space. So the architect services was released, or the RFP was released about two and a half years ago. Again, this has been going on for a while. And the contract for them was executed in July of 2015. It expired in December of 2016, so we need to revise that expiration date as part of this request. Their two primary responsibilities are first, space planning and furniture layout, which is more of the who goes where, what is the best design, what's the most effective and efficient way of assigning buildings and areas of the building to various different departments and branches. Part B is the more, the harder part of the, of the project, the actual architect, engineering, construction, construction administration, looking at the plans, bidding the plans, that sort of thing. So they have a two-part responsibility. The original amount was six hundred and thirty-five thousand. The proposed amendment is double that, it's six hundred and thirty-three thousand. And the project's scope, as I'll show in a few slides here, has also doubled. We've gone from six and a half million to an over fourteen million dollar project. So the premises I'll show here on the next slide, the underlying premise is architecture services are a function of the overall project's scope. As the project's scope increases, so do the architecture services. The construction documents, for example, and the design services have increased because we've made a lot of different changes with respect to which buildings are included. We've increased certain buildings. And so in order to best accommodate the needs of the counties and the departments, we've increased the scope of the project. In addition, the construction administration services, which is the review and modification of the plans and documents while they're in construction, has also expanded, again, in an interest to meet the needs of the departments and the employees that are impacted by this project. So in essence, we've made many, many project modifications. While in construction, we're also making changes to the plans, which is essentially designing on the fly, which DKJ has been fantastic at and very responsive with us through that process. So kind of a real quick overview of the project's architect services specifically being a function of the project's size. You can see in, in 2015, the original project cost was six and a half million, and the architecture services was six hundred and thirty-five thousand. An important way of measuring the appropriateness of an architect's fees in relation to the size of that project is the industry standard of eight to twelve percent. So originally, it was about ten percent, nine point eight. As the project has grown from that six and a half million to fourteen and a quarter, their architect services have grown accordingly at a little bit slower clip. So they're about nine percent total. So they've gone down as a percentage. It's still within the range of appropriateness for architecture services fees in relation to the overall project volume. So project costs, here's just a one quick table summary of the overall project costs, the whole global picture, construction in every category, not individually assigned by department, but by phase. So you can see in construction, the total is eight and a half million. Actually, Phase Two is a little bit larger than Phase One, surprisingly. They're about ten percent larger. Furniture is about three and a half million. I wanted to point out prevailing wage is a large component of what the county obviously pays with respect to construction projects. If you take the construction and furniture costs, we've paid of that amount about thirty-five percent. Prevailing wage was about four point two million of the entire project costs are attributable to prevailing wage, which is a large expense for the county, of course. Other costs are things like IT's data connections, the relocation efforts and contingencies at about two and a quarter, leaving architecture at a million and a quarter, total project cost fifteen and a half. And I want to make a note, again, regarding prevailing wage, that last fiscal year, as a result of changes at the Department of Industrial Relations, we are now required to pay prevailing wage on relocation services, move services. So for example, we use a subsidiary of Cal Bennett's Always Moving. Those services previously were exempt from prevailing wage. They're now subject to it as of last year. So this project also includes those services as well. So that concludes the quick presentation. The project, just a couple, summarize a couple of the important points. The project has grown substantially over the years in an effort to meet the department's needs. As the scope increases, the architecture services also increase. Regarding those fees, the fees are sufficient to complete the remainder of the project. So the architect has confirmed that this is enough for them to complete, including the district attorney's efforts. The project fees or the proposed fees are consistent with industry standards. The current project budget can accommodate these fees, so it does not, it would not be an additional budget request at this time. So with that, be happy to answer any questions and respectfully request approval of the amendment.
Any questions or comments from board members?
First, I really appreciate this update, and I think it's important for the public to, you know, to understand the magnitude of this, these projects. I mean, when you think about, the sheriff's operation has been in its existing location since that building was built, I believe about nineteen sixty. So we're talking seventy years that virtually that the sheriff has occupied that facility, moving his entire management staff team to new facilities. Our fire department has never had its own permanent quarters. We've always had rented facilities from Farmersville, moving for the first time into permanent facilities at the Cigna building. Moving the district attorney, and then the buildings that we've had in our possession with the relocation of the Department of Education out of the facilities have sat there vacant for some time. And so now we're getting, we've got HR in the one facility, the district attorney moving into the other. These are very positive steps. And you pointed out, John, that we're improving the working conditions for our employees. Eight hundred employees represents about one-fifth of our entire workforce. So this is a monumental event. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. CAO, this is where there's not one borrowed dollar to do all this work. This is all being paid for as we go. And so this is a, really a very positive event, series of events, really. It's not just in a project, it's multiple projects. But when you look at the magnitude of this, it's significant, sizable, and a great investment for our employees. And then looking at savings, so we can move out of rented quarters into owned facilities that we own to avoid those rental costs in the future. It's really a very positive move, and I appreciate the, really having this update on this. It was triggered by the large increase in the architect's fees. But when you look at it in the scope of all the projects, obviously well-deserved, needs to be done, and also a really great project to be brought forward to illustrate what we're doing.
Supervisor Ennis?
John, I'm real glad that you brought out how much we're spending and what prevailing wage does to the project. So that's real important for people to know. Thank you. Thank you for a good report.
Any additional questions or comments?
Need for approval?
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Worthley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Can't wait to get this thing done, John. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will take up item number twenty-four. Item twenty-four is regarding the well ordinance.
Hey, good morning. Nelsa Gonzalez, Tulare County Environmental Health. Thank you for having us here today. Today, we are requesting to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance, repealing and replacing Chapter thirteen of Part Four of the Ordinance Code of Tulare pertaining to the construction of wells, and to direct the clerk of the board to publish the ordinance summary within fifteen days after adoption as required by law. So I'm here to answer any additional questions that you had regarding the ordinance.
Supervisor Worthley?
I'm sure, I think it would be helpful if you might point out to us, what are the significant changes from our current ordinance that, you know, sort of highlighting those?
Okay. So some of the significant changes that we highlighted at the last presentation on July eleventh were the setback changes. So there was an increase for ag wells from a twenty-foot setback to a fifty-foot, excuse me, not setbacks, seal requirement. So to a fifty-foot seal requirement. There are also some additional setbacks that were included into the new ordinance regarding underground storage tanks and surface water systems of a hundred and fifty feet and twenty-five feet. We were able to make some changes regarding the inactivation of wells. We were able to give property owners the opportunity to be able to inactivate their well as opposed to destroying a well. And usually, those come forward when somebody either files a complaint with the department saying that they've discovered an abandoned well, or when a property owner is wanting to drill a new well and we receive an application. It's part of our survey questionnaire. We ask if there are any additional wells on the parcel so that we give them the opportunity at that point to decide whether they want to inactivate or if they decide to destroy it. And with that, they get to renew that inactivation every year at a ninety-two dollar fee. So that was something that was a positive that came about for our property owners as well. All of the other changes are very minor. We did receive over a hundred and fifty recommendations from the Water Commission, from AIPAC, and from Community Water. So a lot of those recommendations, we were able to implement because they were good changes and we felt that they were... because they were good changes and we felt that they were appropriate for this type of ordinance.
Any additional questions or comments?
We have approval, Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, good job, Nelson. Next, we're going to move on to item number twenty-seven, which is a request to approve an agreement with Luminex Software, Inc. for mainframe tape replacement hardware licenses and maintenance. This was requested by someone who's about as old as the mainframe, so I think he had a little bit of interest in this, so.
Good morning.
Good morning, Peg.
We are asking to replace the tape drive on the, the mainframe. We are moving forward on a PIMS replacement, but that replacement is going to come late twenty eighteen, best case. During, in the meantime, we have to be able to back up the data on the property tax system, and this project will mitigate risk to that, that data, will allow us to run parallel runs even after we go live, allow us to continue to do archives, and provides for the security of the data, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So, did you have to go online to find this, this material? I mean, do they still manufacture it? I mean, this is such an antiquated piece of equipment.
It is an antiquated piece of equipment, we actually have to buy a piece of equipment that allows us to interface to more modern technology, so that's part of the expense of this, yeah. It's not an easy project to do, but we have to keep this alive until we replace it.
I appreciate, and I had asked to have you come forward, because I also kind of would have an update on, on where we were with the project, and you're, you just said that we're looking at two thousand eighteen going live, and so, I was curious. This is, I've been on the board for eight, this is my nineteenth year, this has been an issue when I came on the board, replaced the mainframe, so getting rid of the mainframe is, is not an easy thing to do, and I realize it's been a tremendous task and that you're moving forward, but I was curious about an update, so thank you, Peg, for that.
And we'll be coming back with a more complete update. There's a meeting in Riverside the end of August that is going to provide us a status update of where they're at and what's going on there. Everybody's gathering in Riverside to be able to see what's going on there, and we should be able to get some more concrete dates on, on when we plan on moving forward, but we have to consider the business process as we look to implement to a production environment.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, Chair, let me turn to motion.
We have approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion from Supervisor Main, I mean Worthley, and a second by a...
We're getting ready for the mainframe about the same time we're getting ready for him.
Supervisor Chuckley, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now, with that good humor, we will move on to our nine-thirty timed items at exactly nine fifty-two. Item number four is a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider placement of delinquent water and sewer service fees, delinquent penalties, and auditors' collection charges for county service areas number one and two, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen tax roll.
Morning, Board, CAO, County Council, Sherman Dix, Assistant Director of Fiscal Services for the Resource Management Agency. Here this morning to go over delinquent sewer and water charges in county service area one and two. So, a little background, the following sewer and water systems are administered by Tulare County, we call them the Zones of Benefit, or county service areas one and two, and these are billed directly to the service users, with the exception of, you can see here, the asterisk on the El Rancho Sewer, that has always been billed directly through property taxes. We collect the service fees to cover maintenance and operation costs. Why we're here today is some customers have failed to pay their service fees, and Tulare County Ordinance two-nine-two-four allows for us to roll those unpaid fees onto the tax roll the following year, so seventeen-eighteen property tax roll. But prior to today, we have noticed, we sent out mailers to the sewer and water customers directly notifying them of the outstanding balances that needed, needed to be paid. We've publicly noticed the outstanding delinquent amounts three times, and now, we're having our hearing here today to once more go over those amounts, and then, August tenth will be the day, the final day that we actually roll the final amounts onto the next year's tax roll. A summary of the delinquent charges, you can see, this is by zone, so in addition to county service areas one and two, there's also Terabella Sewer Maintenance District and Seville Water District, and we'll have separate hearings for those. So, a total, as of the date of the, when the agenda was published, there was a hundred and seventy-eight delinquent customers out of fifteen hundred and ninety-one total customers, about eleven percent. The total delinquent charges was fifty-seven thousand dollars out of a potential of seven hundred and sixty-one thousand for the year, so about seven and a half percent delinquency. I have a little bit of an update, because we are continuing to take payments, you know, up until August ninth, we will take payments. We have thirty customers that have paid since we posted the agenda, that equated to about thirty-one hundred dollars more, so the outstanding balance now is fifty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven.
Chairman, are these monthly charges?
They're monthly charges throughout the year, with the exception of the El Rancho, and some of those amounts are carrying from a couple of years, so. Here's kind of a history of the delinquent charges, so fiscal years fifteen, sixteen, So, we have more delinquent customers this year, but the amount is not as high as last year, and this is our collection history. So, after the, you know, once they're rolled onto the tax roll, we do collect, and this represents the amount that we collect, collected the last three years. So, in addition to their outstanding amounts, there will be a two hundred dollar fee that's per zone, so that gets split amongst the delinquent parcel numbers that remain, and a dollar per assessor parcel number, and then a ten percent penalty on the outstanding So, respectfully, we request to conduct a public hearing on August first, nine-thirty, to consider placement of the delinquent water and sewer service fees, penalties, and charges for service areas number one and two on the seventeen-eighteen tax roll, and approve the placement of the county service areas number one and two, delinquent sewer and water service fees, penalties, and charges on the seventeen-eighteen tax roll as identified in Attachment A.
Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Chuckley?
Is there an average that, that these customers pay per month for their water service?
It's a mandated amount, so it's a Prop two-eighteen, requires that we have a public hearing if we want to raise the fees, so this amount is set, it hasn't changed for three or four years. It, it varies by zone, varies by zone.
They're high and low, or an average?
I just don't have that number in front of me right now, but, I mean, I think as low as twenty-seven dollars, depending on sewer or water, and as high as probably forty-five, fifty dollars, yeah.
Question that I had for you, typically, I know that the county's obviously very different than a city's customer base, but in terms of the percentage of delinquent customers, are you familiar with what other jurisdictions have been experiencing in terms of a percentage of delinquent customers? I mean, like, in the city of Isalia, do you guys typically have, you know, ten percent of your customers delinquent at any given time, or, I'm just kind of curious as to the dynamic?
Cal Water does, is the service provider for water, so.
I didn't know, you're, you're the closest to being a city representative that we got here, but Supervisor Worthley?
Well, I was going to say, I mean, you really can't compare, it's like apples and oranges.
No, I know, it's, it is very different.
Because they have the ability, you don't pay, they shut off your service. We don't have that ability, that's one of the benefits of our newer systems going in, we will have that ability going forward, but as of now, we don't have that ability, so it, it really allows people the ability to delay these payments, and knowing that they don't have, if they don't pay, they're not going to be shut off.
Yeah.
And that's totally different from cities, if you don't pay within a certain period, they just shut you off, so I'm sure their delinquencies are a lot smaller in number than ours. I did appreciate the report that, because oftentimes, we, we tend to look at the people, what they owe, and we kind of wring our hands and say, gee, this is a little high delinquency, but seeing this other information about what the percentage of people who are paying, and then, what we're recovering through the tax process, and ultimately, if they don't pay on their taxes, the property is sold to recover the money, we didn't have that report, but, I mean, the, the fact that we are getting this money, it's delayed, but we are receiving it through the tax process, it's not a good system, but it is working better, I think, than I anticipated, so I'm happy to see that we are recovering through what we're doing, and we haven't always had that report, so I appreciate it in conjunction with what we're doing here today.
Yeah, that was something that we adopted not that long ago to even do this, to place it on the tax rolls.
No, it's always been, it's always been placed on the tax rolls.
It's, it's always been in the government code that we have the ability to do it, it's been some time since the ordinance, the specific ordinance for Tulare County was passed.
Okay.
It's been a number of years, yeah.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments, Supervisor Ennis?
You know, a flat fee is what they're paying, there's no way to meter the water, and there's no meters, turn offs, so.
I, I can let you know, I don't have those stats for you, that's a great question, though, and I, it's something that we're looking into now as we review all the zones, but I can let you know that we do have some statistics on what somebody should pay in, you know, based on income level, and we're trying to figure out a way to manage that amount versus the, the actual operation costs of running one of these systems, so.
And our CAO just mentioned to me, again, reminded me that this is also a subject of consideration for the Strategic Financing Ad Hoc Committee, looking at operating these systems into the future, so, looking at different options and ways that we can increase the productivity of these systems, so to speak, and I look forward to that conversation as well.
That ad hoc is sounding more and more like a permanent.
Well, you know, I don't know, we'll see, we'll see. Is, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to now open the public hearing and see if there's anyone here wishing to comment on this. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board for further discussion and/or action.
We have approval, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to item number five on the agenda, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider the placement of delinquent water and sewer service fees, delinquent penalties, and auditors' collection charges for the Seville Water Company on the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen tax roll.
It may feel like deja vu here, but Sherman Dix, again, Assistant Director, Fiscal Services, Resource Management Agency. I won't delay, this is basically the same presentation, we can look specifically at Seville Waters' numbers. Seville does have a somewhat higher delinquent rate, and as far as the percentage of customers delinquent, collection-wise, relatively the same, or, I'm sorry, delinquent, the average amount's relatively the same the last three years, and then, the collection rates, I mean, we had a big year in fifteen, and relatively the same the last couple of years. Identical process for Seville, so with that, I'd ask that we approve the placement of the Seville Water Company, delinquent water service fees, penalties, and charges on the seventeen-eighteen tax roll as identified in Attachment A. Be happy to answer any questions, so.
How long has it been since Seville's well has been online?
The new one?
The new one?
Oh, well, the, the new well, which was a emergency well, was, I believe, two years ago.
Two years ago, okay.
And it has provided a better service, but we still struggle because the delivery system is antiquated, and so, it continually breaks down. Motion approved.
Okay, wait, this is a public hearing. This, are there any additional questions or comments before another anxious motion? All right, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the board for an excited motion. Do I still have that same motion from Supervisor Worthley?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now, we will adjourn as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District, and take up item number six, which is a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider the placement of delinquent sewer service fees, delinquent penalties, and auditors' collection charges for the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District on the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen tax roll.
All right, great, thank you. Yep, back again, thank you. So, just to highlight, obviously, this is the same presentation, same noticing took place for Terabella. If you look at Terabella, seven point seven percent delinquency rate on a customer basis, and overall, delinquent charges about the same the last three years, been relatively the same, and collections had a big year in sixteen. Sometimes that can happen, is there's multiple years of unpaid taxes that finally got paid off, so it hits all in one year. Same fee assessments. So, with that, request to approve the placement of the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District, delinquent sewer service fees, penalties, and charges on the seventeen-eighteen tax roll as identified in Attachment A.
Any questions or comments from board members? Ennis, you weren't on this list, right? You used to live on, live in Terabella, you paid your sewer fees.
Let me tell you something about Terabella, I didn't even know they had a sewer system there. Because I lived out of town, I have a septic tank, so.
Okay.
If they'd been on a septic tank, they'd be paying their sewer bill.
Any additional questions or comments from board members? Okay, this is a public hearing, I will open the public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak related to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board. I have a motion from Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. You want to do another one?
No, I agree.
Okay, all right, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, appreciate it. All right, next, we are going to move on to the untimed portion of our meeting today, take up item number thirty-two, which is a request from the Registrar of Voters to a, oop, I got to reconvene, sorry, we are not the Board of Supervisors, we are still the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District, and I will adjourn as that body and reconvene as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will now take up item thirty-two, which is a request from the Registrar of Voters to approve the personnel resolution regarding the reorganization of the Registrar of Voters, amending the fiscal year twenty... Come on, Michelle, I'm going to read this whole, I'm going to read your whole presentation if you don't stop me.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members, CAO, and County Council, Michelle Walden, Registrar of Voters. Before I get started on the presentation, I just wanted to give you an update on the recount for the Tulare Local Healthcare District Area Three Director. Our office received a request for a recount on July twenty-fifth, and at that time, we sent out notices to the candidates, the proponents for the recall, and then, Dr. Parmad Kumar, who requested the recall. We scheduled the recall for eight AM on Monday morning, July thirty-first. We notified Mr. Kumar, spoke to his staff several times on the phone, letting them know that we needed to receive payment in order for the recount to commence at eight AM on Monday morning. We were reassured that they would be there at seven-thirty when our office is open to give us payment so we could start. By eight fifteen AM, we had not received payment, so we let the tallyboard and all of the observers know that we would not be conducting the recount due to payment not being received, and so, then, later that morning, we did receive payment, so we then had to start the process again, and we had to notify everybody and reschedule the recount, which will happen today at one thirty PM this afternoon, and it will happen, we did receive payment, so we're hoping that we can get the recount done within four hours, one thirty to five thirty, if not, it will go into the evening until about seven thirty. And with that, I'll move on to my presentation unless you have any questions about the recount. Nope, okay, perfect. The Registrar of Voters provides the citizens the ability to exercise their constitutional right to vote. Over the years, we have seen an increase in elections observers at our polling sites and offices. Therefore, we must strive to improve our processes and procedures continually so that the citizens are reassured that the integrity of the election process is upheld. the citizens are reassured that the integrity of the election process is upheld. Additionally, state legislation has been adopted to address improvements, which has an impact on the services provided. Assembly Bill fourteen sixty-one, eligible Californians will be registered when they get a license, state ID, or an address update at the DMV, unless they opt out. This will likely produce a large increase in registrations. Assembly Bill fourteen thirty-six allows voters to register up to and including Election Day. For those voters registering and voting after the fourteen-day cutoff prior to the election, the votes would be cast provisionally. This will require additional staff time to research and make a determination on those additional provisional votes. Elections Code thirty nineteen, as of January first, two thousand and sixteen, vote-by-mail ballots that are returned without a signature can be signed up to due date, up to eight days after the election. Prior to passage of this legislation, signatures had to be made no later than election date. This means that more staff time will be needed to notify voters, process, and verify ballots during the election canvass period. Elections Code thirty twenty, postmarked plus three extends the date vote-by-mail ballots are timely received. Any vote-by-mail ballot will be considered timely if the ballot is postmarked or time-stamped on or before Election Day and received in our office no later than three days after the election. This is a snapshot of the current organizational chart. As you can see, we have a division manager managing the elections deputy supervisor, with the elections deputy supervisor managing all other staff. This slide shows you the proposed organizational chart. In working with HR and D and C.A.O., staff, we have identified organizational staffing needs as indicated in the proposed organizational chart. The proposed reorganization of the Registrar of Voters is intended to separate duties and functions within a more efficient management structure, as well as providing a proactive approach for future growth. With the appointment of the department head, a division manager is no longer needed to handle the day-to-day operations. There will be new, there will be three new management units, administration, operations, and information technology. While elections was part of the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, they handled the budget preparation, among other things, for the department. Per Mr. Spotta's presentation to the board on March twenty-eighth, he recommended that revenue efforts be continued for the purpose of obtaining additional election-related funding. Administrative procedures should be developed for payment of invoices, and coordination should continue to occur with the C.A.O. regarding the establishment of a sustainable new county cost for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Therefore, adding one higher-level accountant, one-two position to assist with budget preparation and fiscal monitoring is requested to replace the county financial technician, one position. Addressing organizational structure, adding two elections program coordinators will allow us to separate administration and operation duties into separate units. The administration unit will focus on budget preparation and fiscal monitoring, election billing and contracts, grant administration, ADA compliance, new language requirements, and poll worker training and staffing, as well as other duties. The operations unit will focus on all aspects of the voting operations, such as voter registration, candidate filings, nomination documents, FPPC campaign filings, ballot inventory, and oversight, to name a few. Information technology is vital to the operations of the Registrar of Voters, and in an effort to address Mr. Spotta's recommendation for innovative information technology focusing on improvements in the area of mapping, adding a systems and procedures analyst, too, addresses this need. GIS district boundaries mapping requires a specific skill set, and our office continues to struggle with maintaining the accuracy of the district mapping. Our goal is to hire a systems and procedure analyst, too, who has a strong background in GIS systems. Additionally, most of the equipment used during an election requires testing and programming prior to an election, which also requires a strong technol, technology background. If approved, the Registrar of Voters is requesting an increase of one hundred and seven thousand nine, six hundred and ninety-eight to the fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget. Through this reorganization process, I focus on the key elements of the strategic management review that included organizational structure, budget and finance, and information technology. Approval of this reorganization will increase staffing efficiency and productivity. The public is reliant on our department to hold elections with the utmost of integrity and with no margin of error. They expect election results as quickly as possible, and it is my desire to ensure that we work diligently to achieve this by having well-qualified and trained staff. I would like to acknowledge the Board of Supervisors, County Administrative Office, Human Resources and Development, and County Council for your guidance and support as we embark on rebranding the Registrar of Voters office. I ask that the, your board approve requests one through five, as indicated on the agenda item, and I won't read all of the requests as well. This concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from Board members?
Just got a comment, Michelle, good job.
Thank you.
Supervisor Worthley?
I'm not surprised, Michelle is a very talented person, and she's done a great job in that department. I know it's going to be good news going forward, thank you.
Additional questions or comments, Supervisor Crocker?
Just a comment, that I, I, I also think that you're doing a great job, and, and just to comment on your, your interview skills of the Visalia Times Delta did, I thought that was fantastic, so it's very good.
Local superstar.
Thank you. Every time I'm on the news, my phone gets blown up with texts, and it's crazy.
Great job, Michelle. Is there any public comment related to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action. I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Chucklin, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Michelle, good job. Next, we're going to move on to item thirty-three, which is a request from the Tulare County Information and Techno, Information and Communications Technology Department to approve the personnel resolution. Thanks for making that a short first sentence, so that I could just...
Isn't that nice?
Makes it easy. Go ahead, Peg.
Good morning, Chairman of the Board, Board members, C.A.O. and County Council. In July of 2013, the GIS group was moved into TCICT, and we began to look at what they were doing and how they were doing it. In 2014, we reclassed the drafters to GIS Analyst One. As time moved forward, we saw a change in technology and a change in what departments were doing. Much of the work that was done by the GIS Analyst One was moved into the department, some of it was automated, where it was no longer human intervention that was doing the work, but it actually could be done through automation. After reviewing where we are today, we are before you today, asking that two allocated and filled Analyst One positions be deleted. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions or comments? I think that in the world of IT, there's always going to be changes as this sector modernizes, technology's always changing, and I appreciate you being on the forefront of these technological advancements. It is difficult to make a decision to delete any positions, filled or unfilled, but I appreciate the fact that you're not just hanging on to positions that are unneeded anymore due to various advancements, so, thank you for bringing this forward, and I will take up any additional questions or comments, or any public comment. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action. I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Peg. All right, we will now conclude the open session of today's board meeting. I will look over to County Council to see if there is need for a closed session at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items A, B, and C are off calendar. Items D and E will be heard in closed session, but I do not expect any announcements out.
Okay. And we can do this as the Board of Supervisors, I don't have to reconvene as the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District, okay?
I was just the messenger.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your attendance at today's board meeting, have a wonderful day.